We'll take this down so we can see.
I do not see.
She was gonna sign out at the beginning.
Mayor Garcia, I do not have Vice Mayor Abadamas on.
Okay. Well, we'll wait.
Think she was just joining the public comment.
They should be on. Testing one, two. Recording in progress.
There you go. Roll call, meeting's order. Regular city council meeting for April fifth, twenty twenty-two. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Mark Joseph.
Here.
Councilmember David Oro.
Here.
Councilmember Pierre Washington.
Here.
Vice Mayor Miriam Abadamas.
Here.
And Mayor Leon Garcia.
Here. No, we'll go to a report on closed session, confirmation, report of action. Mr. Ross?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public, the council convened an open session at four thirty-three PM to address the matters agendized for closed session consideration. After determining that there were no comments on the matters agendized for closed session, the council adjourned. You reconvene, you finished the closed session at six fourteen PM. With respect to each of the matters, I will do a written report upon return from closed session, consistent with the provisions of Government Code Section fifty-four and nine fifty-seven point one. If there are any questions, I can respond.
Any questions from council? Saying none. Thank you, Mr. Ross. We'll move on with our agenda. So, I'd like to say, isn't it great to be back in person? Well, we have not been in this room in two years. Yeah, yeah, some people have never had an opportunity to be here face to face. No, it's great. It's just great to see the COVID winding down and life resembling some sense of normal for all of us. So, appreciate you being here. Say it early, if you want to make a public comment, we'd ask that you request to fill out a speaker card in advance, please. Thank you. With that being said, just understand that this is all new to all of us, a lot of new technology here. So, we're gonna go slow and progress through it, and we'll solve the problems as they arise. Proclamations and presentations. This evening, we have a video presentation from our Congressman, Mike Thompson. It should pop up on the screen.
Cherry, there's no sound. Are you, you're muted. Is that making the difference? Could you start it over, please? You're not sharing the screen? Sorry. Cherry, can you share your screen? Okay, sorry, I'm just gonna mute her really quick and pull it up here and share it from here.
Share sound on your computer, too.
I, there's gotta be something going on. Here we go.
The technical moment. We'll get it solved.
Trial by fire.
Hey, you know what? One step at a time. We'll get there. There you go.
I'm Congressman Mike Thompson. Congratulations to the City of American Canyon on your thirtieth anniversary. Over these last thirty years, our youngest city has grown to be more diverse, welcoming families from all over the world, and celebrating new languages, cultures, and customs. American Canyon has never lost its neighborly spirit. I'm so proud to have seen American Canyon grow to embrace and protect its wetlands and open spaces, which are so vital to the ecological landscape of our environment. Last month, I had the honor to present a Congressional Record Statement to Mayor Leon Garcia, which can now be seen in the City Hall. The Congressional Record Statement not only proclaims a celebration of the last thirty years, but also a celebration of you and everyone else who lives in and cares for this amazing city. Reflecting on the growth American Canyon has seen over the past three decades, I'm excited to see what these next three decades will bring. Congratulations, and I know that by working together, we can ensure that American Canyon continues to be the gateway to the Napa Valley. Thank you. I hope to see you soon.
So, this is the Congressional Record that Congressman Thompson gave to us as a, let's say it. Bear with me, it's kind of small print, so I'm gonna read it. Congressional Record. Proceedings and debates of the one hundred and seventeenth Congress per session. House of Representatives, March twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Remarks of the Honorable Mike Thompson honoring the City of American Canyon.
Pardon me, Mayor Garcia. They're having difficulty hearing you because there's no microphone when you're standing. I'm sorry.
A new technical moment.
Maybe the podium, if you wanna stand or sit, so that you could talk again. The podium has a tall microphone?
Yes, I'm a tall guy.
Thank you.
Test, test. Can you hear me now? All right, good. Start over. Congressional Record. Proceedings and debates of the one hundred and seventeenth Congress per session. House of Representatives, March twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. Remarks of the Honorable Mike Thompson honoring the City of American Canyon. Madam Speaker, I rise today to honor the City of American Canyon as it celebrates its thirtieth anniversary this year. Nestled between Solano and Napa Counties, the City of American Canyon, formerly known as Napa Junction, was incorporated on January first, nineteen ninety-two. Since then, the small city has proven itself to be a vital part of the North Bay area, earning the nickname "The Gateway to Napa Valley." According to the late John McLogic, often called "The Father of American Canyon," the city is named after Native American, Hispanic, and Caucasian communities that lived in the area together as one people, Americans. Since its incorporation, American Canyon and its people have made many contributions to the nearby Napa and Solano communities, including the construction of a water reclamation facility, senior center, Boys and Girls Club, community center, public library, high school, and middle and elementary schools. The city also has a six hundred and forty-acre open space preserve donated by residents Jack and Bernice Newell, where people can enjoy the beautiful nature of the wine country. Further, American Canyon has acquired its own zip code, nine four five oh three. Yeah. And a post office. Yeah. The people of American Canyon are the backbone of this thriving city. From amateur sports leagues to religious congregations to Girl Scouts and Boy Scout chapters, the residents of American Canyon have created a strong and interconnected community. American Canyon's convenient geographical location, steady growths, and vibrant community culture has earned its status as a premier city in the Northern California. Over the past three decades, the city's population has grown to twenty-one thousand residents and is now the gateway for travelers from all over the world who seek to experience our famous wine-growing region. Madam Speaker, it is fitting and proper that we honor the City of American Canyon here today to celebrate its thirtieth years of prosperity. All right. Signed, Mike Thompson, Member of Congress. And, uh, I'll put it over here at the end. That was very thoughtful of Congressman Thompson to do that, recognize the city, and he certainly speaks very well, words of clarity to what we're all about. Amen to that. Next proclamation is Muslim holiday of Ramadan. I think we have two visitors who want to join us with that. It would be Brother Yunusen and Sheikh Nadal. I think they're gonna be coming on the screen with us. I'll wait for them.
Okay, I have Nadal, and if Brother Yunusen, if you could raise your hand, or if there's anyone else on the attendees' side that would like to come over, raise your hand now so I could move you, please. I do have, oop, there we go. I do have Brother Nadal. No one's hand is raised, so I think we're good.
Okay.
All right, good evening, Mr. Councilwoman, Mr. Councilman, and thank you so much for asking us to come and join you today. It's really, American Canyon is a great, always a great city for us. We've been together, you know, for many years, and we always feel the warmness of your welcome to the community. On the behalf of the Muslim community in American Canyon and Vallejo, we would like to thank you so much for always keeping us in your mind. As we are entering the month of Ramadan, over two billion Muslims around the world, they are observing this month, and they are fasting during the day and praying during the night. We are, this month is to increase our spirituality towards God, to increase our connection with Him, also to increase, to have our daily prayers for peace for the community, for the peace for the whole world, and to remember while we are hungry, to remember there are millions and billions of people, they cannot afford the meal of the day, to remember billions of people that they are hungry and they have children to feed, but they cannot find the means to feed them. This is the month where it cannot be accepted unless we go and offer our money and wealth to help the world, the people in the world, the hungry people, and especially, we should not forget our community, our neighbors. They are our, you know, they have been asked by our prophet to take care of our neighbors and to be sure that I cannot sleep the night unless I'm sure that my neighbor is full. I cannot spend the night until my neighbor is in peace. So, thank you so much for giving us the time to talk today, and we pray for God's safety and God to bless our country, our city, our community, and give us all peace in mind. I really appreciate the time that you give us, and thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. We're very honored and pleased to have you join us this evening. I shall read the proclamation now. City of American Canyon proclamation acknowledging the Muslim holiday of Ramadan. Whereas freedom of religion holds distinct and cherished and essential right, fundamental to the values upon which this nation was founded, and whereas enriched by the unparalleled diversity of residents, American Canyon takes great pride in supporting individual religious freedoms and is strengthened by the many varied religious, political, and cultural traditions and contributions of its diverse population, including those Americans who practice Islam. Whereas approximately one million Muslim Americans currently reside in California, the highest number of any state in the United States, and whereas there is a thriving community of Muslims in California and numerous mosques and religious centers, and American Muslims pursue diverse professions and make rich contributions to local social, cultural, and economic vibrancy of the United States, and have distinguished themselves by fostering respect and understanding among all people through all faiths and services. Whereas public health orders associated with COVID-19 outbreak force temporary closure and restricted use of Muslim nonprofits, community centers, and mosques, schools, businesses, and other establishments. Throughout the Bay Area, Muslim organizations have assisted those indeed during the COVID-19 pandemic, and whereas it is appropriate to promote awareness of the invaluable contributions of American Muslims in California and American Canyon. And whereas Islamic Center of Vallejo caters to the spiritual and social needs of the Muslim community in American Canyon, providing religious and community services vital and via small group prayer. And whereas Ramadan is regarded as one time for spiritual reflection, increased awareness, giving to global poor, sick, and hungry, and bridging the differences between people over a shared commitment to faith. And whereas American Canyon joins the Muslim in recognition and celebration of Ramadan and a blessed Eid al-Fitr this year. Hope I pronounced that correctly. Now therefore, I, Leon Garcia, Mayor of City of American Canyon, do hereby proclaim the City of American Canyon acknowledgement and recognition of the rich history, contributions, and guiding virtues of American Muslims, and to recognize celebration of Ramadan and to commit Muslim communities on California for the lasting positive impact they have made toward the advancement of American Canyon in our country. Assalamualaikum.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Good to have you here. So, much to celebrate there. Vice Mayor Abadamas, you have your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Sheikh Nadal said, Ramadan is a lunar month. For those of you who are unaware and are present in the audience, it's the name of a lunar month, I apologize. And it's not just about fasting from food during the day, it's also fasting from sin, not swearing, not engaging in anything that is not good for the world, basically. And so, I wanted to, first of all, take a moment to thank the City Council, members of the council, and Mr. Mayor for issuing this proclamation annually. We've come a long way, and I am proud to call you guys my colleagues. And number two, I wanted to thank Sheikh Nadal and everybody else who is participating in this with us today. Something as simple as this proclamation promotes awareness in the community, and this awareness makes me optimistic that my daughter will not suffer from the discrimination that I suffered growing up in this community. So, I really appreciate it. It means a lot to me, and I'm sure it means a lot to the entire community. Thank you, everyone, so much, and A'aid mobadik to all, khalam mutu praid. And that's all.
Thank you. Well, thank you for your comments, Vice Mayor. And we'll move on now to our next proclamation. Thank you. That proclamation is April as Arts Month. City of American Canyon proclamation, arts as, April is Arts Month, April twenty twenty-two. Whereas a month of April has been recognized as a celebration of the arts and culture community in Napa County, known as Arts in April, the countywide celebration fosters the unique identifiable sense of place to locally produce and presented arts and cultural programs and events, highlighting creative talent, inspiring locals, and enriching visitors' experience of authentic Napa County culture. And whereas the arts and culture embody much of the accumulated wisdom, intellect, and imagination of humankind, and whereas the arts and culture enhance and enrich the lives of every resident, and whereas in two thousand eight, hundreds of residents from each town and city came together to create the County of Napa adopted community culture plan and endorsed the following cultural core values of Napa County. Self-expression is everyone's birthright. The arts serve as a common language. The arts are critical to healthy economy. The arts allow us to access our past to ourselves and to each other, and the arts gives us a sense of place and a home. And whereas American Canyon Arts Foundation, one of the oldest community organizations in American Canyon, a continuo esto, maintain, enhance, and support the role of arts in our community by bringing artists and community members together through recreational culture and economic art events, programs, and shows. Now therefore be resolved that we, the City Council of the City of American Canyon, do hereby proclaim April as Arts Month in the City of American Canyon, and call upon our citizens to celebrate and promote arts and culture in our county, and to specifically encourage everyone to enjoy arts and culture in their towns and cities. Very much. And I think we have.
Mayor Garcia, is it okay for the Board of the American Canyon Arts Foundation?
Please.
Mayor Garcia and council, thank you very much. Yes, as you mentioned in the proclamation, the American Canyon Arts Foundation is one of the oldest organizations in the city, having been founded shortly after the incorporation of the city. And, you know, we are, we serve as advocates for all things creative and all things art, which, and there are many mediums of art, music, painting, ceramics, and we have, you know, we embrace all of that. We hope to be the go-to organizations for all things art and music and creative. There are a few things that we are excited about that I wanted to mention to, to council and those present. A Juneteenth celebration, the first one in Napa County. We're partnering with Brendan Knight, and it's gonna be a very exciting event. I think you're already familiar with it. We're in negotiations for a summer live music program back at Canyon Plaza. Cross your fingers. And we have the ACHS Art and Music Festival highlighting our high school students. And with that, to formally accept the proclamation, on behalf of the ACF members and board, I'd like to introduce our newest youth board member and freshman at American Canyon High School, Ethan Sabey.
Hi. So, I have a few things that I, you know, would like to say. On behalf of the American Canyon Arts Foundation, we would all like to thank you for declaring April as Arts Month. Arts has been rapidly losing interest and also funding recently in American Canyon, so we trust that this promotion of the arts would improve interest in not only the arts themselves, but also cultivate the community that loves and appreciates creativity so much. We trust that this is the next step and a path and the brick of ideas, and the City of American Canyon really is making that possible. Thank you all.
I would like to present the proclamation to you. Congratulations, and thank you for all the wonderful work you're gonna do out there. Thank you. Before we move on, I do have one item that I would like to insert and recognize at this point. Attended a wonderful event in Napa, hosted by the, presented by the Committee for Volunteer and for nonprofit and volunteer leadership, Arts of Napa County, Arts of Napa Valley, excuse me, and it recognizes people in leadership roles throughout Napa Valley, and we had one of our own who was recognized as Volunteer of the Year, Powell Hales.
I know, love it.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, citizens. You know, it's, it was totally unexpected, but I have a great group of people that support me to make me look good. So, it's a team effort. It's not just me. So, I'd like to recognize our team as, these last couple of years, we've put in a lot of hours and fires and COVID and pandemic, everything, so just hats off to them as well. Thank you.
I'd like to point out the decorations as a way of recognizing our concern, solidarity, support for the people of Ukraine. Had a great event up in Napa over the weekend. About two thousand people attended, so, for donations and support. Appreciate our city reflecting that here. Moving on now to public comments. Any items not on the agenda? Do we have public comment this evening? Have speaker cards, you can pass them over here at the end. If not, have we received anything?
Okay. I have not received any written public comments for items not on the agenda.
Hybrid, is anybody in the queue?
I have no hands raised at this time.
Very good, thank you. We'll close public comment and continue with our agenda. And the agenda changes, council. You have not accepted a motion for the consent calendar. I'll make that motion. I'll second. Motion and second. Roll call, please.
Yes. It was, I'm so sorry, motion and second. Okay. Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Abadamas?
Yes.
Thank you. And Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor Garcia, just real quickly, again, item eleven, staff is requesting we postpone that to our next council meeting. The council, that's a business item.
Do we have a, we'll need a motion for that?
Nope.
Okay. So, let's continue. Thank you. Moving on to our agenda, public hearings. There are no public hearings this evening. We'll move on to our business calendar. Number ten, American Canyon Police Department, two thousand twenty-one annual report. Good evening, Sheikh Greenberg.
Good evening. All right, I've got it up. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, and also members of the community. And also, I want to thank my boss, Sheriff Ortiz, for attending tonight. In this, tonight, I'm here to present the twenty twenty-one annual ACPD report. This report reflects some great crime fighting that your police officers have been doing over the last year, and also some outstanding connection with the community and the community policing program that we have here in Marin Canyon. So, with that, I'll just dive right in. So with that, I'll just dive right in. Just an overview of the department. Many might not know that American Canyon Police Department is actually a division of the Sheriff's Department, just up the road. We have a contract, and we're currently in a three-year agreement, which expires in June of 2022, with two additional extensions, with a final expiration contract date in 2024. This year, or the 21-22 fiscal contract with the County of Napa is $7,192,168. Additionally, the city also provides $536,500 to supplement. We have two police technicians, which help out with like code enforcement, or help with code enforcement, parking citations, towing abandoned vehicles, and also help out at community events. And this also supplements extra equipment we need that the Sheriff's Office doesn't supply. ACPD, obviously, we work 24 hours a day. We don't, we don't get holidays off or weekends off or nights off. And then the Sheriff's Office is just up the road, as many of you know, and they provide a ton of extra services to the City of American Canyon. Our current staffing level right now is 24 sworn. It's myself, one chief. I have four sergeants as supervisors, two traffic officers, which are, you see them around town on the, on the motorcycles, and you might have gotten pulled over a time or two by them, gotten a ticket. We have two school resource officers, one at the high school and one at the middle school. And then our two K-9 handlers, and our current K-9s right now are Brick and Brody. One community resource officer, which she's fairly new, she started at the first of the year. She's been in American Canyon. She took over as the CRO in January, and it's Officer Maureen Patterson. And then we have 12 patrol officers, and then I mentioned the police technicians, we have two, and then we have one administrative clerk that works the front counter at the PD. So that's our current staffing level right now. Training, we attend lots of training. In 2021, we had over 1,000 hours of post-training. And post is Peace Officer Standards and Training. It's basically what the state, it's a state requirement for us to go through a certain amount of training a year, and we're at 1,000 hours. And in 2020, we were at 740. Part of that greater number is due to COVID. A lot of our in-person trainings were canceled and were held virtually or got canceled completely. The minutes, lineup minutes are, we had 3,500 minutes. That's basically our briefing, which the sergeants hold at the beginning of every shift. And those, those topics, as you can see, there's tons of topics there. They go from domestic violence to vehicle pursuits to legal updates. I won't go through all of them there, but there's, as you can see, we, we have a bunch of topics that we train on. Crime statistics. So it's not on this slide, but I wanted to point out, it's in the annual report that the DOJ clearance rate, which, the DOJ clearance rate is, DOJ, the State of California basically compiles a clearance rate to crimes that are cleared, and the City of American Canyon, or the State of California, I should say, clearance rate for 2020 was 45.2% on property crime, I'm sorry, on violent crime, and 9.3% on property crime. Our, our clearance rate here in American Canyon for solving crimes is 73.1% on violent crime, and on property crime is 39%. So we're at about 30% above the state average for crime solving, crime solving here in the City of American Canyon. We did have 42 vehicle pursuits this year, which is, which is up quite a bit. 13 of them were terminated. I get, I get asked all the time, Chief, why is there so many more vehicle pursuits? And I don't really have a direct answer to that. Unfortunately, most of the folks that we catch during vehicle pursuits, they invoke their Miranda rights, so they don't want to talk to us. But I will say that American Canyon, we're at the southern end of Napa County, so when crimes are committed up valley, there's only so many ways out of Napa County, one of them being American Canyon. So by the time the call goes into dispatch, if it happens up valley or just up in Napa, there's a time delay, and you know, someone's got to call 911. Something got stolen, or someone hurt me. And by the time it goes to the dispatcher and then gets dispatched to the Sheriff's Office or Napa PD or one of the up-valley agencies, you have a huge time gap. And they might give out a vehicle description. Well, by the time the vehicle description gets out, the person could be, more than likely is traveling through American Canyon. So our officers hear it, and that's, that's one consideration is why we've, we have so many vehicle pursuits. We had 19 incidents that required use of force. Thirty-four, we had 34 mental health evaluations, and 37 firearms were seized by ACPD. Calls for service, they haven't really changed much over the, over the years. The total amount of calls for service for the Sheriff's Department is over 44,000. And City of American Canyon has close to just under 16,000 of those, which is about 36% of the calls for service in the county. And then Yountville has 8.5%. Arrests by home city, that hasn't changed as mu, hasn't changed over the years much as well. We had 452 arrests this year total, and 14% were Napa residents, 19% were American Canyon, 30% were Vallejo, and then other outside areas was 36%. Hot topic this year was catalytic converters theft, I'm sure everybody's heard of, or probably even knows somebody, if not yourself, that's had a catalytic converter stolen. It's not just American Canyon, it's statewide, if not nationwide, it's, it's becoming a problem. You can see the increase over the years. In 2019, we only had nine, which one is too many, but we had nine. 2020, we had 15, and last year, we had 75. And those were reported to us. I've talked to several community members just last week that had a catalytic converter stolen, and they never called because they figured they weren't going to turn in the insurance company, and they were just like, well, they're not going to catch them, so why should I call? We encourage people to call and report it. There's, there's several bills out right now that are, that are on the table, if you would say, that are in favor of law enforcement, but those are still waiting disposition on what's going to happen with those. It would, they will benefit us in, once we catch a criminal with a stolen catalytic converter. And these are some, a more broader scope of crime statistics, just some key ones of note, we did not have any homicides in American Canyon this year, which is great. In general, serious violent crimes are down slightly, where property crimes are tremendously increased across the board. Let's see, we already went over pursuits. And we did have, unfortunately, we did, I'll get to that in a minute, but we did have one traffic fatality this year. So these pictures represent some significant cases, and unfortunately, the pictures aren't in chronological order, but I'll kind of go over them. On October 11th of last year, the first picture on the left shows a fire. Many might know we had a fire over at New Open Space. It was actually partly in the county jurisdiction, so ACPD and American Canyon Fire District assisted CAL FIRE on that incident. As American Canyon police officers were evacuating the area, we were brought to the attention that there was a male running from the area frantically. American Canyon Police contacted him, determined he was involved in the incident, he had burn marks on his body, and he was ultimately arrested, and arson charges have since been filed on him. He's awaiting to go to court. The middle slide of the gun in the case, that was an incident that we had at the Doubletree, and officers were contacted, or called and contacted a male there that was possibly involved in a domestic violence incident, and he was ultimately arrested. He was on, currently on a probationary status, had warrants for his arrest, and a whole slew of charges, numerous felonies, and he was taken to jail. And he was actually sentenced already to state prison, and he's currently in prison for two years and 16 months. The top right handgun was also a domestic violence incident at the Doubletree that we were dispatched to. This suspect, they were out of town, both these subjects were out of town visiting, staying at the hotel. We were dispatched there, domestic violence incident, and he was arrested. He actually pointed a gun at his, the female victim in the domestic violence, and he's currently awaiting prosecution. And then the last slide there was, that was some great crime fighting skills. Some of the officers saw these folks with a car jacked up at like 2:00 in the morning. They were stealing catalytic converters, and we basically caught them in act, and so it was a great catch. We don't, it happened so quickly, they can take a catalytic converter in two or three minutes, and to catch them in the act, it doesn't happen very often. And they're currently awaiting prosecution as well. Some traffic data here. I just wanted to note that any traffic issues can be reported to Public Works, the Police Department, City Hall, or online at american canyon.org/traffe. And then just some quick stats on the pie chart. Napa was 10%, and these are traffic citations issued. American Canyon was 28, Vallejo was 41, and all others 21. And here's a broad overview of traffic citations issued and parking citations, DUI arrests, and traffic collisions. I'll kind of touch on some of the important ones. I get asked quite often, why are your officers always on Highway 29 working spears? How come you're not out on local roadways, running, working stop signs and whatnot? And I just, I, I just want to point out the top two statistics. The first one, local roadways, 344 citations issued on local roads, not Highway 29, and 184 on Highway 29. So I just want to reassure the members of the community that we are working the local roadways and not just Highway 29. And then we did have one fatal traffic accident. Unfortunately, that was back in May of last year, and it was, involved a bicyclist on Highway 29 going northbound near Kimberly Drive. The driver, there was no drugs or alcohol found to be involved, and it was, the bicyclist veered out in the roadway for no apparent reason, and it was basically, it was uncontrollable accident. The bicyclist, it was also at nighttime, he did not have any lighting equipment on the bicycle, no taillight, no headlight, so it was very hard for the driver to see. Community outreach, so this is Officer Patterson out here with Lobo. And like I said, Officer Patterson is new to the force, but not new to the force, she's new to the position. She's been doing a number of community events lately. You might have seen the Flyers, Donuts in the Park. So she's been out, and this Saturday is the last one that we're hosting as of, as of today, and it'll be out at Via Blagio. So please come out and join her and meet her. A keynote on here is our neighborhood watch sign-up has doubled over the last year, which is outstanding. It was 1,600 in 2020, and it's 3,000 now. So that's great to see. Our, our cameras registry, and for those of you that don't know what that is, if you have surveillance cameras attached to your house, you can register on our website. That way, when we have a crime committed in the area, we know who has cameras, who doesn't have cameras, and we know what addresses to hit first to go see if there's any video footage so that we can try to solve a crime that happened in the area. And then National Night Out was in person this year, and it was great to see everybody. We had nine neighborhoods, and hopefully next year, we have more. Additional resources, you talked, I talked briefly just up the road at the Sheriff's Department. We have an array of resources up there. There's some pictures here of some of them. One of the resources is NSIB, Napa Special Investigations Bureau. They typically work narcotics, but now they work pretty much any, they're kind of like calling the Leatherman tool of the law enforcement in Napa County. If they need surveillance work done, they call NSIB. If they need, you know, any undercover work done, they call NSIB. I take personally to that unit because I worked in that unit for about 10 years of my career. So it's a very dear to my heart. The stats here, I just want to point out, they're low, but that's a good thing. The narcotics stats up here, if they're low, that means that, well, I'll go back. So most of your drug dealers that NSIB investigates, they're, they're investigating the drug dealers, not the users. So if they're not writing search warrants at houses in American Canyon, then that's, that means they probably don't have information that there's drugs being sold at residences in the city, which is good. Typically, our, our sellers come from out of county. If you look at the stats up in the Napa city limits and up in the, up in the county, they're much higher than American Canyon.
Chief, just to clarify, I jumped in earlier on this, is with you yesterday, these are just for American Canyon, correct?
Correct. These are just for American. And I should point out, the very top statistic is marijuana plants, and those are actually like growing marijuana plants seized. As you can see in the slide to the right, that was the, one of the three growhouses in American Canyon that we, that NSIB rated last year. One house could have that many plants in it. So that's where that number is kind of important. Some of the other pictures up on the screen are our two K-9s, Brick and Brody, and we have the SWAT team doing some training, and then the drone team on the far two pictures. We use the drone team for a lot of different things, even search and rescue callouts. If we have someone run from us and we can't get air up quick enough, then we use drone. They're, they're a great asset to law enforcement. And then these are some more pictures of special units that the Sheriff's Office has, SWAT team, our honor guard, Animal Services, which has a separate contract for American Canyon, and then our bomb team. These are some statistics for Animal Services. And as you can see, the top call across the board for all areas of Napa County, including American Canyon, is loose dogs. That's the number one call for Animal Services. And we had 409 total calls for service in the Animal Services Division. And I just want to end by saying, the community has helped us out greatly by putting our eyes and ears on several cases last year. We can't be everywhere at once, so if you think, oh, should I call 911, please call 911. You, you never know when the information you have is going to help us solve a crime. The saying goes, if you see something, say something. We, we appreciate all the eyes and ears the community has. And then I also encourage everybody to follow us on social media. We have a great following right now, and, and we want to keep it that way. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Jake Greenberg. That's just, we all really appreciate the service we get. It's very community oriented. I've noticed officers are always very approachable, very community oriented in their way of interacting with people, and it's very appreciated. I know folks who live here, knew here, remarked how safe it is here. know folks who live here knew here remark how safe it is here in American Canyon. We're very fortunate. So we thank you for that.
Thank you.
Sheriff Ortiz, thank you as well. Good to have you here, Sheriff. With that, I brought a light here for Councilmember Washington.
Thank you, Chief. I really appreciate that presentation. You know, it's near and dear to my heart, for one. But I was hoping you might have put something in there about your Citizens Academy, because that's something that really helps a lot of people in American Canyon. I had the pleasure of being part of that. And although I have a law enforcement background, I learnt so much about what the county, the Sheriff's Department brings to the table. So yeah, maybe you want to talk a little bit about the Citizen Academy. I know Jen works with you on that. It's an awesome program, you know, and I think it contributes to how the relationship between the Police Department, the Sheriff Department, and our American Canyon residents benefit from it. And it's also something that earmarks across the county, across California, that shows that we're doing it right here. You know, where a lot of cities have problems with their city, with their police departments not having that relationship, we're the opposite. You know, you could walk up to a person's home right now, and people will know who you are. They know who the officers are. And that's a contribute to what you, what Chief, what Sheriff Ortiz has done. So I applaud you for that. But don't sell yourself short, you know, talk about that academy.
So there's actually two different, we have the city, we have the city academy here in American Canyon. So you're going to learn, if you, if you attend both of them, it's going to be totally different spectrums of, of law enforcement in Napa County. For the city of American Canyon, when you're going to learn about American Canyon Police Department, a little about the Sheriff's Department, you might get a tour. Last year was the first year that I got to participate in the city Citizens Academy, which was great. This year, actually, when I was getting this presentation together, I hadn't, we hadn't announced yet that there was going to be a Sheriff's Citizens Academy. So recently, that was announced. And yes, I believe in May, we're going to have a Citizens Academy at the Sheriff's Office. You go on to social media, all the information's there, how to sign up, or you can go onto the Sheriff's Department website. I've participated in the Sheriff's Department Citizens Academy for several years in a variety of roles. Councilmember Washington, like he said, like he mentioned, he attended one of them, and I got to, I got to watch him shoot some guns.
They put a fully automatic weapon in my wife's hands.
So no, it's a great opportunity. The Sheriff's Department one is, is quite longer, and it's, it goes more in depth on the services that the community members down here in American Canyon actually receive from the Sheriff's Department contract. So it's actually a really good program to attend. And we encourage, encourage everyone to attend.
With that, the, the clerk?
Yes, I apologize. You know, it's kind of in the middle of this presentation, but for the record, our Vice Mayor, Abudamos, has excused herself from the rest of the meeting. So any voting from now on, she will just be called as excused.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Oral?
Chief, thank you for the presentation. I attended the city's Citizens Academy, as well as the Sheriff's Academy, Sheriff's Citizens Academy. Fortunately, I missed Firearms Day. So I want to, when you do it again, I want to make up that session. I would like to do that. But thank you again for your report. I do have some questions. I had some concerns and questions around the Doubletree and crime. You highlighted two instances there, two incidents there. What's the call rate like there? Were there others?
Yes, there were others. These were two that I picked. They were highlighted, they were, they were more significant due to the firearms involved. I'm not, I'm not pointing fingers at the Doubletree. The other hotels in town, we do get called there as well. But we have noticed the call volume go down at all the hotels. And that's due to the rates going up. Rates go up, crime goes down. When the rates are down, we get, you know, for better words, less desirable people that we, in American Canyon, are committing crimes. During COVID, there was a lot of vacancy, not just in our hotels, but, you know, nationwide for obvious reasons. So the rates were dropped to, to entice more people to stay in their hotels so they could stay in business. Unfortunately, crime followed that. Since we're getting out of COVID, I've been, we've been working with management at all the hotels, including the Doubletree. And they've been more alert on what to look for, some red flags, and when to call us. And we're getting ahead of it more, and the calls are going down tremendously. Some of the, some of the, some of the times you might see patrol cars at some of the hotels when you're driving around the city. And that's possibly also due to proactive law enforcement, which I 100% support. When they're not, when they're not going, responding to calls for service, you know, they're out looking for things that don't look right. And there might be people sitting in cars at the hotels, or, you know, possibly abandoned stolen vehicles, that type of thing. So. But the calls for, the calls for service at the hotels are definitely going down since we've been coming out of COVID.
So they probably had more significant ones, but would you say, do they have a disproportionate amount of calls going there?
Since July, as I came on, I don't notice more at the, at any, at one hotel or the other.
Are you working with any hotels to do any security risk assessments or anything like that?
We have at two of the hotels, and that's helped. We've actually, the CROs have met with them and done some presentations on human trafficking, drug identification, signs and symptoms of drug use, and that has helped as well.
At the Doubletree, had any occurrences involved special task force NSIB?
I don't recall that one off the top of my head.
Okay.
I know we did have one recently, within the last two months, but it was not at the Doubletree.
Okay. So it sounds like, as the pandemic eased, hotel roommates came up, it seems like, crime seems to be taking care of itself and going away.
Yeah, that'd be correct.
I would ask the hotel general managers to raise their rates. Thank you very much.
Well, I'd be very pleased with the hotel tax we have received.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you, Chief Greenberg. Thank you.
Okay, item 11, that has been continued. We're now on to item 12, Water Supply and Demand Drought Emergency Stage Two.
Is it okay to close this laptop up here?
Yes. Are, are you, are you going to use the, are you using the laptop, Felix?
I won't be using this. I'll use my own.
Okay. You're using a different one?
Using the special one.
Okay. Go ahead and close it, and then just let me know when you're ready. I'll turn it back on.
Yeah, I won't, if, if it's, it doesn't have to be on the screen unless you all want to see it.
Oh, it's up to you.
Go ahead and start the three minutes. All right. I'm, I'm good. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Staff and community. Felix Hernandez, Maintenance Utilities Director, tonight I'm presenting on our Water Supply and Drought Emergency Stage Two. As you know, my computer wants to turn off on me. Well, we've had consecutive years of drought, 2020, 2021, and we are moving into a third year. There we go. Sorry about that. This thing always goes to sleep at the worst times. And we got to go through this process. I'm in. All right. So it's with 2022 shaping up to be the third consecutive year. Warmer temperatures, minimal precipitation. The Department of Water Resources indicated that 2021 was the fourth driest year on record. And they also indicated the last three months have been the driest on record. So the, starting 2022, again, driest on record. March 1st, 2022, I'd like to point out something in the staff report that there were some mix-ups there. March 1st, 2022, snowpack was 68%, while April, April 1st, it was 38%. And then statewide reservoir stores level 69% of historical average. And again, DWR is indicating that the last three months have been the driest on record. They did conduct a fourth snow survey at Phillips Station, and what that found was 2.5 inches of snow depth and snow water equivalent of one inch, which is 4% of average for that location for April 1st. As a response of this ongoing drought, for last year, 2021, the city received 5% of the state allocation. Normally, we asked for 5,200 acre feet. We received 5% of that request, which was 260 acre feet. And then moving into 2022, we received 15% of the allocation, which is 700 acre feet. We will also be utilizing another 500 acre feet of emergency Vallejo permit water, and we are pursuing other supplies from various statewide transfer programs. Something of note is that, this doesn't like me tonight. Something to note, the demand for 2020 and 2021 are virtually identical to the demand in 2015, which was the last time that the state experienced a drought like this. So if we assume no reduction in the demand for 2022 compared to 2021, we will be facing a deficit of approximately 470 acre feet. The water supply for 2021, we have 700 acre feet of Table A, 896 acre feet of advanced Table A, 500 acre feet of Vallejo permit, 176 acre feet of Article 21, which is, is something that we don't know that we're going to get. Just it comes on the books as the delta is in excess. And then 300 acre feet of Vallejo treated water. So that total is 2,325 acre feet. Additional supplies for 2022, 500 acre feet of Vallejo emergency permit, and then to be determined are the Dry Year Transfer Program and the Yuba Accord. Over the last several years, the historical water demands from 2018, they've ranged from roughly 2,600 to 2,900. That information is included in the staff report. As the additional amount that we have identified, we believe that it will match the anticipated deficit. Again, same as last year, we have very little margin for error. And it really depends on the other supply programs and how they're going to be available. Reducing customer demand is the key again for 2022. That's going to be our, our, our main strategy. So with demand patterns, the current data reflects a total potable, potable reduction of 14%. That would be comparing 2021 and 2020. So we did see a 14% reduction. Current data also reflects a total potable reduction of 31% January 2022 compared to January of last year. Although for February, that reduction was, was virtually zero. Those numbers were about the same. Going back to the Department of Water Resources, they, their hydrology update, we're seeing a mean temperature slightly above average this time of year. And as, as a result of that, and this ongoing drought, March 28th of 2022, California Governor Gavin Newsom signed a statewide drought emergency executive order N-7-22. All counties are included in that, again statewide. The State Water Resources Control Board, they're setting the stage to a strict ornamental outdoor turf at commercial, industrial, and institutional buildings as well, and asking for a voluntary reduction on water use by 15% from 2020 levels. So the history of this, you go back to July of 2020, July 20th of 2021, when council did declare Stage Two drought emergency, and we called for a 20% reduction. Unfortunately, we did not meet that 20% reduction overall classes. We did have a residential customers achieving a 12% reduction, the commercial customers achieved 13%, and the city nearly The reduction goal continues to be the Stage Two emergency remains in effect. But there is a call of action, a call to action like last time, a call to action for, for our customers. We just got to get this trend to start decreasing enough. And we're going to ask that all customers, residential, commercial, industrial, governmental, be subject to the same 20% reduction in use. Generally, a 10% to 20% reduction can be achieved by implementing some, some minor things and things that we've outlined in our drought contingency plan, and that are outlined in the staff report. Those being no more than two days per week, irrigating in landscape, especially turf lawns. If you do, please do it early morning between 6:00 PM, 6:00 AM. Inspect all your irrigation systems, repair leaks, adjust spray heads, eliminate anything overspray on the sidewalk. No more than two minutes of runtime for each cycle. If water begins to run off the gutters, sidewalks, then evaluate your runtimes. Replace all old high-flow toilets. I will point out that the city is also looking for commercial, doing some commercial rebates for water-free urinals. That's still in development, but we anticipate that coming on shortly. And things we can do, replace those old toilets, high-flow toilets, utilize conservation incentives and rebates for plumbing fixtures and appliances, and then limit duration of showers to five minutes or less, turn off the faucet when brushing teeth, which I'm on a well in spring, and I still do that, right, at my home. So there, there's categories of use, really important to note that we have this hierarchy. There are categories such as health and safety, commercial, economic, and decorative. So examples of health and human safety would be drinking, cooking, bathing, things of that nature. And that, the state has set a standard of 55 gallons per person per day for that purpose. For the city, our population roughly 21,800, it would equate to approximately 1300 acre feet per year if we were to be able to do that. The remaining demand is either commercial, economic, or decorative. An example of commercial, economic would be businesses, particularly those that utilize water in their production. They're inside the facility, the production, say a winery or something along those lines. Economic, commercial water usage, uses, there, there's this, other activities that go on with that category there. And then decorative use would be like outdoor landscaping, fountains, swimming pools. And they don't fit into the other categories, that decorative. So in general, the health and human, human service, that's the priority. Try to follow that, and then decorative. At this time, a drastic reduction, elimination of decorative uses is needed so that, that outdoor stuff, landscaping, fountains, swimming pools, really need to get a good reduction in that. Another thing important to note is that turf is the largest consumption of water irrigating. I'd used the word turf recently, and someone thought I meant like AstroTurf. So we're talking natural grass, right? That's the highest use, single largest decorative use right there. There's also a distinction between decorative use of water for commercial industrial properties versus residential, where decorative at commercial is, is not going to impact property values as related to residential. So meaning that folks let their grass die, they're conserving water, and my mind doing the right thing, but it really can affect property values. Now, it's not in the staff report, but I'll say if all through California, everybody's doing the same thing. So it's, you got a good comparison there, right? But again, call for action. Community, eliminate all outdoor turf potable irrigation while a call for action for residents to reduce outdoor turf irrigation, otherwise mindfully use water. Staff does recommend delaying the implementation of certain provisions of the American Canyon Municipal Code, Section 13.14, namely enforcement of mandatory 20% reduction or drought Municipal Code, Section 13.14, namely enforcement of mandatory 20% reduction or drought surcharges until future date. Primary reason is that staff believes that we can work cooperatively with staff and commercial users and take a team approach to this. So we really, we don't want to take a punitive approach. For the remainder of 2022, 20% reduction compared to 2020, demand is needed to counteract the overwhelming response and allocations provided, or underwhelming, and allocations provided by the Department of Water Resources, meaning they're really underperforming on their delivery. So we got to do something about it on our end, right? And conserve some water. If we implement these practices now, hopefully we can forestall some punitive measures in subsequent stages mandating reductions, including Stage 3, which would be a 30% reduction mandatory, and Stage 4 would be a 50% mandatory reduction. In addition, the city does have a drought strike team. That strike team is, we meet regularly, and we identify operational things that we can do, internal top operations. Believe that the urinal rebate came out of that, those discussions as well. For example, we're going to convert Community Park 1 and 2 to resuck of water for irrigation. It's a top priority for the summer, which I know Erica's team is working in collaboration with Maintenance Utilities on that. So we're generally focused on operations, right? Potable, recycled, how do we reduce potable? How do we increase recycled use? And prior council action provides that the mayor and city manager, it does give them the authority to carry out transactions to secure additional supplies. Reducing customer demand is key for 2022, like I've said. Such actions is consistent with Governor Newsom's May 10th, 2021 Declaration of Drought Emergency for Napa County and elsewhere. The fiscal impact, we see that reducing water demand will decrease revenue received from selling treated, but in the short run, the water fund budget has sufficient funds to withstand the short-term increase in costs to acquire additional sources, such as dry year transfer program, Yuba Accord, and valleou emergency permit water. With that, I'll take any questions.
A question regarding, we have this, I'm able to do residents online, it's the MyWater. Some information about that, I think would be helpful this evening for public consumption.
The MyWater portal, we're asking all of our residents to sign up for the MyWater portal. We do have some incentives on there. We have some raffles, you sign up, you get entered into a raffle, I believe, Jen, is $50 now? Do you want to touch on this?
Sure. But this is too tall for me. Oh, it still works. I do love doing this. Good evening, Mayor and Council and community members. I'm Jen Kenzembach, the city's communications manager. So I just wanted to share the Water Portal. If you go to the city's website, cityofamericancanon.org/water, I'm sorry, slash save water. The Water Portal is available for all of our customers, residential and commercial. And when you sign up, you can literally see within 15 to 30 minutes your use as it's happening. So it's been really useful for the customers that have signed up. The drought strike team that Felix was talking about earlier, our communications and outreach portion of the team are going to be focusing on pop-up events where we're going to help people walk through and sign up on the spot. And then we'll also be doing some door-to-door outreach to people to help promote the portal. And we do have a $50 credit that you can win on your bill right now. So that's pretty exciting. Any other questions for that?
So in the event there's a water line break at somebody's house, so it's between the meter and the house, is there some way that the city gets notified of that excessive use during a breakage?
So our utility billing team and our water maintenance crews do monitor the portal information, so they do get reports when there's a large amount of water leaving the system. But I can tell you personally, I live here in American Canyon, and as soon as I signed up for my account, immediately I saw this huge spike going on in my use, and we've discovered a really deep leak in our front yard, in our irrigation. So it works. I wouldn't have known that for probably another week until my driveway was flooded, so.
Where you got your water bill.
Yeah, exactly. Instead, I got an irrigation bill.
Yeah, I was at the Blood Board meeting today, that question came up. You know, because we read our meters remotely, they're all have that electronic device on them.
Right.
Somebody wanted to know about, well, if the water line breaks, how does the city staff know that it's broken and need to go fix it? So I guess the answer is yes.
But it's still a good idea for every customer to sign up, because there's 5,000 meters that, you know, we only have so many people in the city that work here to track that, so.
What about the recycle water program?
So the.
What's the status of that this time?
Yeah, I don't know that.
Yeah, thank you, Jen. So I want to, Mr. Mayor, I want to touch back on the Water Portal. Is, we do, we do run reports on that on a regular basis, and we're continuing to dig into the capabilities of that technology. We're automatic alerts, right? Automatic alerts where we have high usage areas. So for recycled water, we are ramping that up. We have a few options this year that we're looking into. One is similar to what we did last year, where we use staff, stuff time. The other is to contract a delivery hauler. So we would contract with someone to drive the truck. Typically, when we use city staff, we take two people. So if we were to contract it out with someone to drive the vehicle, and hopefully a Class A vehicle in some areas where it's a little bit larger capacity, and then have one staff member with that person to help with the deliveries. The other option that we're looking at is purchasing our own water truck, and then, excuse me, and then continue to do those deliveries as well. So we are ramping that up. We have, I think we have over 500 people that have signed up. And we have a lot of residents, the uptick, more people showing up to the corp yard and to the wastewater treatment plant getting water. So if you're interested prior to deliveries, come on down, get a barrel, sign up, and we can get you set up, right? Get a barrel, and you come in and fill the barrel up and use it as needed.
Well, as a user, I praise the operation. It was very useful in our house.
It's, the, last year was really put together very quickly, and the staff done a really good job with it. And we're really just trying to refine it from feedback that we've received from the public.
Well, appreciate the fact we have it. Thank you. Councilmember Joseph, you had a question or comment?
Yes, a couple. First of all, as a recycled water customer, I really do appreciate the service, and it's essential for me. And then, to that extent, do we have an estimated time when that delivery service will start up again?
Oh, I could probably commit to something.
We literally just received some pricing today, so I would think we could get that rolling within the next four weeks.
Because I have some residual water from over the winter, and I'm running low, so I'm getting kind of anxious for the program to start. Beyond just my own personal situation, can you, you've outlined some of the things that we're working on, converting the parks' recycled water. Can we quantify, how much water can we, potable water can we save by watering, by installing the pipe at our parks, remaining parks, and other angles? I guess what I'm looking for is what strategies can we do as a city, in addition to encouraging our customers to conserve, what projects can we do to shave a few more acre feet of water out of the equation?
Thank you. Thank you for that, Mr. Joseph. So last year, when we compared 2020 to 2021, just in the few things we did internally, we were able to accomplish a 30% reduction. And what we anticipate is the water-free urinal program kicking off, and then that's going to be, you know, every gallon helps, like you pointed out. As we start looking at, we can gather data fairly easily to the parks that are using potable water, and then be able to quantify that, because we just go back and look at how much they've been using, and then see what the savings will be once we put recycle to them. Don't have the information offhand, but we definitely can get that information.
Because that would be helpful, because it sounds like we have a 400 or 500 acre foot deficit here. And, you know, kind of, you know, it's water, not money, but it's a huge deficit. And it's, you know, to me, it's a concern where you can find water, because everybody else is looking for it. So the strategy is to avoid it through physical conversions like the parks, or extending our recycled water. And then the question is, do we have enough recycled water to address that? I mean, you know, what would happen if everybody was on recycled water and we just didn't have the supply? So how is all that working?
Well, when we have residents that do it, there's a small number, right? Because that, any water that's potable water that's being used on those turf, smaller areas of turf, obviously that water doesn't come back to the recycle plant. But the other areas that use potable water, the larger parks, that water never makes it to the waste plant anyway, right? So we're not able to reuse it. Once it's on there, it's on there. We're going to see the biggest reduction, I think, from those larger turf areas, commercial as well. Even though, you know, I mean, like I said, that water doesn't go down the drain, right? So we don't calculate it in our water balance for recycled available.
Are there, yeah. So I guess, other than everybody conserving, we have a few big projects that will help. One last thing, I remembered the city manager came out with a notice today talking about getting drought-resistant plants from mid-city, or some of the incentives that the city is offering. One other issue, car washing. I've noticed a few people washing their own car, but if I'm not mistaken, going to, say, the American Canyon Car Wash, they have to recycle their water, I think, or at least they use it more efficiently?
That's correct.
So if you need to wash your car, it's still better to go to a car wash. May cost you, but it's better in terms of water supply.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Thanks.
Next is Councilmember Washington.
Yeah, just two quick questions, one for you, Mr. Hernandez, and one for Jen. I know you mentioned that we are trying to avoid a punitive approach. And I think the 20% isn't aggressive, it's a good, a good goal, but we have a lot of residents that go over and beyond. Are we thinking of ways to reward them for their good efforts, or, you know, good citizenships, if you will, to say, hey, look, thank you for doing your part, and then beyond?
We are, we are. So I guess this is as good a time as ever to throw this out there. We're working, currently working on a citywide app. So what that, what that application would be is, it entails a water coin. So what we're trying to develop is like a one-stop shop for customers. They can go, they can pay their bill, they can submit, see ClickFix, contact the city, look at their water usage, all from one platform. And part of that as well is what we've developed is WaterCoin. So WaterCoin is, you might see folks that are over the, under the, you have a minimum tier, which I've seen this plenty of times in the past, they have conserving water, but my bill's not going down, right? It's because they're still in that minimum-based range. What this WaterCoin does is it does, it does reward those folks, right? And we haven't really got too far out into the weeds on what that's going to be, if one coin is $1, or one coin is $5. We got to be able to quantify that, but we are working on that, and we hope to have that launched here really soon. In fact, it's in beta testing now.
That would be great. That would be great. And my second question is for you, Jen. On that portal, is there a way to kind of tell how ours, like a percentage of how many residents are actually utilizing it and supporting it? And again, going back to my original question, is how do we reward them for doing just that? Doing what we're asking, so we can get that data?
So I'm going to answer your second question first, because it's fresh in my mind. So the, basically every Wednesday, we're doing a random raffle where we're drawing a number that associates to whatever name is on the signup that matches that number, right? So anybody that signs up for the portal is eligible to win the prizes that we're doing. So whether you're a new user, or, you know, anybody, except if you are a council member, probably you can't get it. But, so anybody can be rewarded in the same way, so that's the answer to that. And then, yes, currently we have, I think it's 485 of our customers, residential. We have 59, 5,900, I can't do math on the spot. But as I said earlier, we're, that's really going to be our focus in outreach and communications for this season, because we believe that spending a few minutes with each customer and actually sitting down and showing them the tool is going to be the most successful way to get people to actually use it and understand how important it is. So I can't promise, but I'm pretty persistent, and I think that number will be pretty good next time we talk about it, so.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Oral?
Yeah, did we talk about cash for grass in this conversation?
Not specifically.
Yeah, so let's talk about that. So during the last drought, I think we did a three-year drought in the teens sometime, we put a lot more effort into that. I converted my yard, and I don't even think I was on council at the time. And I looked down my street, and I'm like, there's five more yards that need to be converted. And where are we on that? Why aren't we promoting that more? I mean, to me, this sounds like an all-out effort. Like, tonight, the presentation, I think, could have been more impactful. Mr. Hernandez, if you would have shown the numbers, if we could have preloaded them on that laptop, because we miss the visual of the seriousness of this situation. And would love to have the public see that and understand that, and I think the visual would have been better. But I think we need to do an all-out, full-court press, if you will, on every possible tool in the toolbox. We're talking a lot about doing the landscaping for our industrial area and taking that out, which should have been done years ago, honestly. But let's refocus our efforts on citizens as well, and I think the citizens can step up beyond just asking them to reduce water at home with five-minute showers, but also with this lawn replacement. And to anybody who's listening in the public, I think I did this in 2015, 16 maybe, the most beautiful thing that's ever happened is that I've never had to mow my lawn on a weekend. And the benefits are great. So, and you actually do use a lot less water. Your water bill comes down considerably. So what are your plans for cash for grass?
Currently, so unfortunately, the staff member that we had that was really leading that charge and doing really well, he accepted another position, onto bigger and better things for him, and we're happy for him. And currently Pam Phillips has had that up. We're going to be meeting with the county as well to get some ideas and move that program forward. The other thing is, we've gathered data, so we've looked at what other cities are doing as far as their rebates. And we're not, we're not one of the lowest, but we're also not one of the highest. So we're evaluating that as well to provide better rebates for cash for grass.
Yeah, I didn't see that in any of the reporting, and I think the council would be supportive of that. It's a way to engage with the community, and it's a way to make the step forward in terms of saving water, and to, you know, I think a lot of yards could use refresh, so that's what I would go for. And also have your presentation on the laptop next time.
Yeah, it was, this, the staff report mostly, Councilmember Oral, but I'd be happy to share the graphs.
No, I'm fine. I saw that, I read the reports, but people who are watching this, and the people in the audience, aren't seeing it.
Very well. We'll make sure and put something in the other, better slide deck.
Councilmember Joseph?
Just to put the cash for grass in perspective, about 10-plus years ago, we tore out all of our lawn and put in a lot of landscaping. And I used to, I think I was close to 15 to 20 units a month in the summer, and it dropped by about five units per month. So it really is a significant savings, so that's my testimonial.
And on that, on that regard, 2021, we replaced 22,000 square feet of turf through the program.
Oh, okay.
Good, those are good numbers.
And you're not mowing your lawn either, are you?
Oh, I haven't mowed my lawn in so long, I don't know how to use a lawn mower anymore, and darn proud of it.
Okay. Can you think further? Thank you for your report. Oh, did you have a comment?
Yes.
Let's get out of your way here. Won't be needing this, I don't think. All right, I'm just going to step us out here.
Good evening. I just wanted to give a quick update on the recycled water projects. As you're aware, we already had the Benton Way project going to come, Park 1 or 2. But we're also in spike rush, but we're also fast-tracking the Tower Road extension now that we have. But we're, we're also in spike rush, but we're also fast-tracking the Tower Road extension now that we have water to Devlin. Fast-tracking the Tower Road, we have some large users in that industrial area on Tower Road who have been asking, such as City of Napa and the transfer station, to get online and get off the potable water. So those are fast-track projects as well as the Little League Park. Trying to get that out to bid in the next two weeks with an award possible in May. So we're really trying to get this out and out in front of it before this summer.
Excellent. Again, do you have, it'd be nice if we could quantify how many acre-feet of water all of this represents because we're looking at 470 acre-feet. And if 50 or 60 acre-feet can be shaved out by those projects, that, that helps.
Can we make in that number?
Exactly. Thank you.
Hello, would public comment on this matter? Anybody want to address the council on this? Please come to the podium.
I just wanted to say, what about people that are...
Nobody can hear you though, except us, sorry.
Okay, what about people that have already cut back every time? You know, I cut back because I've been through this before. So I don't do a lot of things that most people do. So I cut back and then you tell me to cut back another 15%. So that means I already cut back 15%, now I've cut back 30%. How do you do that?
Staff want to answer the question?
Yeah, I can chime in.
Could you please give me your name too? Sorry.
Johnette McNaughton.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you ma'am, and thank you for your comment. It's a, it's a good question, it's a fair question. Some people have really made a lot of efforts, others are just starting to become aware of, of the issue. Some of the things we outlined in the staff report are those things, right? Are we, are we irrigating outside? Are we checking our toilets? Are we looking at the water polo and, and seeing whether we have unusual uses? If you're doing all those things, that, that's what we need from everybody. And so we may not be talking to you, you may have already done your part. We're talking to the folks who maybe haven't done that. So, you know, it's, if everyone is doing all of those things, if we're not really irrigating outside, if we replaced all of our toilets, if we watch, if we sign up for the water polo and we realize, you know, in the middle of the night, why is there, why is there usage happening? It's maybe we have a leak in our toilet we didn't know about. Those are the little things we're asking everybody to do. And if you've already done your part, that's, we appreciate it, thank you.
So if, if my son's house was built in 2005, we'll say, and it's 2021, 22 now, so does that mean we need to re-take his toilets out and put new ones in?
It's probably a good idea and we have money to help you do that, so you don't have to pay for the whole cost of it. We have rebates for that. But there's a little number right in the back of the toilet. 1.1 is the best, 1.6 is better. If it's more than 1.6, it's definitely using too much. So in that area, probably 1.6, it's something you could still swap out and we'd give you a rebate for. We're talking folks kind of pre-2000 that are using two gallons per, per flush and, you know, 55 gallons a day if you're putting two of that when you're flushing a toilet. It, you know, that's, that's a lot of water to go down the toilet. So just that little number on, on the back of the toilet will tell you how many gallons per flush. And we have rebate programs to help everybody swap out. We want to get everybody down to the 1.1s.
Okay, because I noticed, I sold my other house and we put new toilets in over there, but that one was built in 2003. And so I just got to thinking, because of this, Austin's house is ready to have new toilets.
Potentially. So I would look at the little number right by the seat there. It'll tell you, it'd say the 1.1, 1.6, or two. Definitely get rid of the two. But the, the biggest piece, we only have 500 and something customers sign up on the MyPortal, it's free. It's a, it's a linkage to your actual water use. We have 5,500 customers. And so, you know, that's, that's 10% roughly. It's becoming self-aware of your use. Like Jen noticed, she didn't even know she had a leak when she signed up and she found it. The, the really cool thing about that software is it's literally like a connection to your water meter. It shows up an hour later, you can figure out how much went through. And you can look, at 2:00 in the morning, most people shouldn't have any water demand. There shouldn't be any water going through your meter at 2:00 in the morning unless you just got off the night shift or taking a shower. Otherwise, there should be zero now. But if you have, if you have leaks coming in or coming and going, you got water usage, start asking yourself, why?
So I, I go on American Canyon slash water?
Yeah, on our homepage, cityofamericancanon.org.
City of American.
Yeah, homepage, cityofamericancanon.org, right at the top, has a couple of links. Jen can give you her card and she can also talk you, talk you through how to, how to get that signed up, yeah.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Beth Marcus, I just want to say that I participated in the Cash for Grass, $750 back. I'm so happy. My backyard looks so nice. Mark inspired me. And then Jen, I love the portal. I look at my thing every day because I like to see the little green line. I'd like to beat it every month, so it, it's really exciting for me, so I really like that.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
I do have some speakers on Zoom, Mayor Garcia. I have Justin Hamilton-Hole. Just one moment, I can pull him over. Okay, go ahead, Justin.
Well, good evening and welcome back. This is very long time. So it's working my house and I'd love to see in person. This has been nice being on the Zoom for all our people. My question is, if you guys can talk to our chief, we need to get that grass cat, cat, because the hill is tall. Thank you. Welcome back.
Thank you, Jess. Thank you, Justin. I have no other, Tammy, Tammy Wong had her hand raised but is down. Tammy, if you want to speak on this topic, she does. Just one moment. Go ahead, Tammy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to share that I'm a great fan of the recycled water and I was glad to hear the program is returning. And on the topic of cash for grass, I know that when some neighbors have done it, I've seen that they haven't put in a lot of like replacement plants. Instead, maybe they just put in rocks or something else. And that's not necessarily a good swap as far as climate change goes. So I think, I don't really remember what all the requirements are, but maybe we can look at that also in terms of like carbon sequestration and some of our climate change filters. But anyways, I'm excited that we're going to be getting recycled water deliveries again. I'm like Mark, I'm running low. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I have no other hands raised at this time.
Okay. Well, I'll close public comment then at this time and we'll move back to council. And any further discussion needed on this council? I think this is a more of an information item.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just have a comment there.
Certainly, go ahead.
Yeah. So I wanted to address, to make a suggestion to Ms. McNaughton's question. Thank you for doing all you can. I think that's the right thing to do. I try to do all I can. I even got with those silly shower timers in there that makes me mad every time the hourglass goes all the way down. But the suggestion for you, and I think the suggestion for any citizen, is if you're doing a lot, get your neighbors to do more, right? So I have a neighbor who's, it just pains me to see that grass grow and he overwaters it. And I just kindly remind him every time without getting him mad at me, if I can, and really encourage people to do cash for grass and other things like that. I think when we look at this collectively, individually, I don't think the city is looking at you. They're ready to help you individually. But the city is looking collectively at all of us to get us down to the 20% range, or the ranges that we, that are being mandated by the state. And so it's a collective, community effort to try to get that done. And some people need a little bit more push than others. So thank you for doing what you're doing.
Might add to Tammy Wong's comment, roses are very hardy plants. I planted my house, haven't watered it since about 2007 or 2008. They're very hardy, got deep roots, and there's a way you can have a bit of color in your yard. A lot of landscaping and you don't have to water. You just, of course, have to prune them, that's all. Okay, council, shall we move on to the next item?
Yes.
And that would be, turn your page here. Fiscal year 2022, '23, budget update.
Mayor and council, just a quick little reminder, it's really helpful for the audience online to speak directly into the microphones. Not everyone's able to, to hear, so just a quick little reminder for that. Thank you.
Can I get an extension on this so I'm not leaning over the desk?
We're looking at that.
Yes, thank you. Just a little longer, yeah.
Yeah, City Clerk has a pretty nice long one over there, too.
I do.
Hey, that's fancy. Get four more, five.
Tall people here need a...
Excuse me, can you turn on the podium, please?
Yep. It's on. Did, do you guys have the, the remote control over there? Because it was on. Unless, unless you shut it off, it should be on. The, the TV? Let me just, okay, the TV's on. Now it's switched to podium, so it's just not...
Do you have to say multiple screens?
No. That's why I don't like swapping laptops. Excuse me. Give me just... What am I going to do? Excuse me. Yeah, that's, that's...
Do you don't have to say multiple displays?
Yeah, it's not sensitive.
We're getting somewhere.
Thank you. All right. Good evening, mayor and council members and members of the community. After a little technical difficulties, which... We can get underway. So at this preliminary date, so far, our budget estimates are for general fund, the revenues of about $25.2 million for the year and expenditures at $26.1 million. That is a general fund estimated net loss of $979,000. We, we do have an estimated unassigned fund balance expecting to grow by about $250,000 to $2.5 million by the end of 2022, 2023. This is achieved based on taking our estimated net loss, combining it with our estimated ending unassigned fund balance for 2021, too. And then I did some research over the past 10 years as to how our final budget is in consideration to actuals. And we usually end up the year about $650,000 on average, better than the budget. And then did the same thing as a variance for the adopted budget each year, and that's about $750,000. So while our mid-year adjustment said we would end the year around $2.2 million unassigned fund balance, we can add $650,000 that we expect to come in over that. The reason that these numbers are higher is because the city has a, a policy of not re-budgeting. When we roll purchase orders at the end of the year, we re-budget in the new year for projects that aren't completed during the current fiscal year. So you're almost always going to come up with expenditures under the amount that you have budgeted at, at any point during the year. We are trying to work on budgeting only what is expected in the next fiscal year and hopefully we'll gain more accuracy there. But we are considering that $750,000 in this estimation. We also have funding of reserves for 2022, '23 that we are expecting to be around $176,000 right now. So after combine, after adding all of those, you end up with an estimated unassigned fund balance at the end of the year of $2.5 million. So this is a graphical summarization of the general fund since 2010 to current. The, it, it goes through two business cycles. We have kind of the, the impacts of the Great Recession towards the beginning of those items. And then the COVID-19 pandemic, more towards the right. The hash lines are for the adopted budget this year, which was estimated to break even. And then our mid-year amendments are estimated actuals in the second to the right line. And then the adopted budget for this year in the right line. So some key revenue assumptions. Property taxes are still on pace to increase by about 3.8% in the next fiscal year. We do foresee that slowing down a little bit over the coming years, but even in the next five years, 3.5 or better seems to be the average. Sales tax, we had a revision after the mid-year amendment. And after that revision, it's still a 1.2% increase for this coming year. Transient occupancy tax or hotel tax, 2.6%. And then card room, business license and T-Bid, we had a 6.4% increase. Part of this was due to the approval of the four additional card tables that are expecting to come online sometime during the new year. Other estimates, we weighted as either an average of the past four years or an average dollar growth year over year over the last four years. Other key assumption was our investments. A lot of our cash reserves are kept in LEAF, which is the local agency investment fund. And we're expecting earnings of around 0.3% for those investments and all other investments at 1.3% for the year. So this shows the $25.2 million pie chart for this year's revenues. The tax revenues make up almost 60, almost 70% of the total with operating revenues at about 18% and transfers in around 12%. To look at this as a trend over time, uh, property tax has always been our largest source of revenue. Um, and, uh, the, um, sales tax is the second largest, then transient occupancy tax, and then other taxes. Uh, again, you see that it increases almost every year, no fail. Looking at it in dollar amounts, uh, for taxes for twenty-two, twenty-three, we're expecting seventeen point five four million, up from approximately sixteen point seven million, um, this fiscal year. So these two charts show the makeup of a, a property tax dollar and a sales tax dollar. So the property tax, the city of American Canyon gets about twenty-nine cents out of every dollar that you pay in property tax for your homes. Uh, three cents goes to American Canyon Fire Protection District. Uh, three cents goes to the library, eight cents goes to the community college, three pers, three cents goes to the superintendent of schools, and fifty-one cents goes to Napa Unified School District. Uh, three, three cents goes elsewhere. Uh, and then for sales tax, uh, it's seven point seven five percent in, uh, American Canyon. One percent or one cent out of every seven point seven five cents, uh, goes to the city of American Canyon. Uh, the state of California gets about half. Um, measure T is our local gas, uh, tax. Um, that's half a cent. Um, and then the local revenue fund for the state, uh, gets another one and a half. So our operating revenues, uh, if you look, it, it makes up about eighteen point one percent of the total revenues. Of that amount, charges for services make up nearly half. Other areas, uh, that help are franchise fees, which typically grow about four percent per year. Um, investment earnings, um, that really are based on the, the interest rate environment, and then licenses and permits and miscellaneous, um, revenues, um, that aren't classified in any other category. So we're looking at about four point five five million for our operating revenues for this coming fiscal year, uh, up from about three point nine eight million this year. Our transfers in is how we fund the government through transfers from other areas within the government. So, uh, the, the largest portion is for support services, which like, say, the Department of Finance provides a service to the rest of the city, so enterprise funds and, and pay the general fund for the services that are provided. Um, there are a lot of different areas that provide support services from human resources, um, and, uh, administration. Uh, we have, um, transfers in for capital projects, uh, transfers in from gas tax and things like that. Uh, this shows this year's, as a pie chart, again, the support services is the largest area. For expenditures on the general fund, uh, salaries and benefits total about eight point eight million, uh, which is thirty-three point six percent of the total or a nine point two percent increase over last year or this current year. Police services are about seven point seven million or twenty-nine point three percent of the total, which is a six point one percent increase over the current year. Um, it is of note that police services generally are around thirty to thirty-three percent of any city, uh, even county, uh, state, federal. It's usually a third, so that's, uh, well in line. Our debt service actually decreased by one point two percent to our, to a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. And our internal service fund support services, uh, went up to one point nine million, which is eighteen point three percent increase. Total expenditure increases were six point five percent to the twenty-six point one million. So the, the main reason that the salaries and benefits went up, uh, in the general fund were due to position requests. In public works, there's a request for a new engineering technician, uh, that would be about a hundred and twelve thousand dollars per year. Uh, parks and recreation has one full-time recreation coordinator for the facility rentals and open space. Uh, eight part-time recreation leaders, uh, four part-time recreation leaders over facility rentals, and three part-time recreation leaders over open space. Um, those together combined total two hundred and twenty-three point four thousand. And then the police, uh, in their upcoming contract amendment are, we are considering adding another lieutenant, and the half of a year total is, um, I'm sorry, that's one fifty-six point six. Um, and it's, uh, four hundred and ninety-two point two thousand. So that, the cost of the lieutenant is just over three hundred thousand per year. For the internal service fund support changes, for buildings and maintenance and information technology, we changed our methodology on how we calculate those amounts. So while we are doing, uh, more deferred maintenance, the general fund share is going down because we changed the calculation to replacement value of assets. Um, for fleet, it's mainly, um, inflationary pressures on fuel and, um, heavy equipment purchases that, that are being made. Information technology, we changed our methodology to include whenever a, a information technology need fund is funded by more than one department, it goes into this. It used to be for only citywide classified information technology needs. And then legal, um, had an increase of a hundred and sixty-three thousand, and that is, um, based on currently known legal needs. So the expenditures, uh, again, shows two economic cycles, and if you look at the trend over time, um, we're in that, uh, ramp-up period again. And then, uh, as we fulfill the needs of, of, of all the different areas that we're bringing back after the pandemic, uh, that should level off quite a bit. So our personnel expenditures were, uh, thirty-three percent of the general fund, and the non-personnel were sixty-six. Uh, personnel expenditures broken out for this year, uh, primarily salaries at, uh, sixty-seven percent. I would note that, uh, that, uh, the retirement, our CalPERS portfolio, uh, performed really well this last year. However, they have announced that the discount rate is going to go down, so it will help cushion the blow from a reducing discount rate, uh, that, um, the returns were so good. So for non-personnel expenditures, um, supplies and services, um, are fairly unchanged, they grew a little bit. Uh, part of that is because of the move to the ISF funding for multi-department, um, needs and internal services or information technology and, uh, the sheriff contract. So this shows it in a pie graph, and, um, so with that, the general fund reserve account or the savings account that we have, um, we're estimating the unassigned fund balance to increase by about two hundred and fifty thousand this year after funding the contingency reserve at the level of three percent of general fund salaries, uh, which is a one hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred dollars. Um, the capital projects reserve and the economic development reserve will both be fully funded as of the end of this fiscal year, so there will be no need to fund those in fiscal twenty-two, twenty-three, unless it is chosen to use those reserves during the fiscal year. Also of note is that increasing the reserves are not an expenditure, but it does reduce the amount of unassigned fund balance. When looking towards the future, um, council, uh, during the last meeting, chose to undertake about nine million in new construction projects using about four point four million of the ARPA funding, uh, which leaves us about five hundred thousand more to appropriate in the future. Uh, another thing to note is that development activity in the city remains robust, and we look for that to continue for years to come. We recently had our first interest rate hike in quite some time. Uh, the, the rate is currently point five percent. The Federal Reserve has signaled that it's going to increase rates six more times this year. Um, the one that's coming next might be a half percent. Their target is two point five percent, and they expect to achieve that either by the end of twenty twenty-two or mid twenty twenty-three. Um, continued inflationary pressures, uh, also, uh, seem to persist. Uh, we heard a lot of transitory at first, and now the Fed is taking actions to help control it and bring it back in to target ranges. Um, so with the moves that they are making, we are expecting that to subside. Also, uh, economic growth is continued, is projected to continue, but at a slower rate than this pa, this past year, um, primarily, um, because of how fast-paced the growth was coming out of the recession. The next steps in the budget process, uh, May twelfth, we'll bring the proposed budget to the finance committee. May seventeenth, the proposed budget will come before council, and June twenty-first, we will bring the recommended budget to request adoption. Any questions, feedback, suggestions?
Thank you for the report. Lot of details in there, uh, good to see that we're gonna be in good stead financially. Always good to know that one. Council member Oral.
Yeah, just a quick question, then, first of all, thank you for the report. Um, quick question on the property tax increases. Is that turnover of properties, new properties? How are you guys guessing that or estimating that?
Well, we, we do, uh, contract with HDL as a, a consultant for property taxes, sales taxes and transient occupancy taxes. And, um, they are known to project conservatively, but they generally come in pretty close to what the actuals are for property tax.
So that's existing properties with natural increases?
So the property tax includes your secured, your unsecured, your homeowner's exemption, um, your, um, unitary. Uh, it has your VLF, uh, uh, funding. I know I'm missing another small one, but it's those categories.
Okay, but it doesn't take into account, um, housing that's coming online, new housing that's coming online?
It has, uh, in the tool that I use, it, it allows me to populate that. So I do make assumptions in coordination with our community development director as to the number of units coming online, the average cost per unit that we're expecting in the year. Um, and so I do plug those values in, uh, to the estimates.
Okay, and then on the sales tax, looking back over a decade, it seems to be the same all, in the same range. It hasn't really grown at all, has it?
Um, it has actually grown. Uh, it's, uh, it's kind of deceiving because like, on the three million that we have here, we're expecting about a hundred thousand per year, um, over the next five years of an increase. So it would be small changes over time. They, they don't ramp up as, uh, quickly as the property tax. Um, also, part of the reason why it might look flat and, uh, in the current years is, uh, the slowdown in twenty twenty, so in twenty twenty-one, you're catching back up to pre-pandemic. And then in, um, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, we just started to feel the impact of the change in the warehousing.
Do, do you ha, did you have a slide with the actual numbers on the sales tax at all, the trend line on sales tax?
Yeah, so it was two point eight, then two point seven. During the pandemic, it was two point four, resuming back to two point eight. Uh, this year, it's actually three hundred thousand higher than that. It's coming in right at two point nine, and, uh, our preliminary budget is three point oh.
Off the top of your head, do you have any idea what it was like ten years ago? Was it a two point two or one point one?
Uh, off the top of my head, no, but I can pull it up.
Uh, I didn't want you to dive deep. I'm just trying to get a range here because I know that we are, um, property tax is obviously going up, and we have homes coming online. I think Watson Ranch will have ninety homes coming this fall. Just trying to understand that predicament and trying to think through this as a policy here in terms of economic development and vitality as a mission statement for the city of American Canyon. Is sales tax something that we can focus on and develop? I think we're doing that in the land use policies that we're creating, right? The Watson Ranch project, Napa Valley Ruins and Gardens will have retail. Broadway district specific plan, as that plays out, it'll happen. I'm just curious to know, you know, I'm just really asking the question. And I think it's something we haven't really paid attention before because it's so, our budget is so dominated by property tax. Is there a way that we can get sales tax to bump?
There is the opportunity, um, or something that would be available, would be like a use tax, like a utility user's tax or something like that.
No, I'm not asking for new taxes. I'm asking to take advantage of existing taxes, yeah.
If you economically grow American Canyon and have other options for spending within the city, that would be taxable, that would increase tax revenue.
Yeah, I get that, I'm just trying to think through, and maybe this is not you, this is us, that we need to do that. What, what policies are in place, or at least to begin to pay ti, attention to the sales tax revenue is an opportunity to create, um, additional revenue, so, thank you.
Sure, um, one area that could help is if you could get a distribution center that is not a last mile in the city. That would, that is a large source for some jurisdictions.
Thank you for bringing that up. I, so a couple of years ago, pre-pandemic, uh, attended a couple seminars from this League of California Cities, um, trying to figure out a way, how could we get a percentage of the, of the wine that's getting shipped out of here? Uh, some of those wines are, they're stored here, but they're not sold here, but they're distributed here. Um, if you, if you know of any ways to where we, we could figure out a way to put something on there to where we get a little bit, a one percent or a point zero one percent for the billions of dollars of wine that are flying in and out of American Canyon, that'll add a lot to the parks budget, so.
I'll def, definitely look into that for you.
Council member Joseph.
Yes, well, first of all, thank you for the report, uh, and I'm particularly pleased with the historical variance analysis that you did, uh, because I was beginning to notice that, looking at our ten-year forecasting that we've done for the last two or three years, that, you know, the years would always start off really dire, that we'd be millions in the red, and yet every year we had a surplus, and I was trying to wrap my head around that one. So I appreciate the fact that you're looking at it. Hopefully, we'll start bringing those variances down to more realistic levels. They, they shouldn't be so dramatically high. So I appreciate that. And, and secondly, on the issue of sales tax, one way to think about it is if your population doesn't change for ten years and you don't add any new retail, it's a safe bet your sales tax is going to be virtually nil or reflect inflation. So to beef that up without adding a new tax, you've got to add rooftops and specifically add more retail. We're working on the rooftops, but if we don't take advantage of those, the additional people that have money and want to spend, uh, by having local retail shops, we won't capture near as much of the sales tax that we're generating by. by having local retail shops, we won't capture near as much of the sales tax that we're generating by, by all those homes. So strategically, I think Watson Ranch or the ruins will capture a fair amount. I think the corridor, as we develop it, will do some, but I think it's important to remember, as much as people don't like to see all the new housing sometimes, it is probably the only way or one of the most effective ways that you can get more retail opportunities. 20 years ago, when we added, when we doubled in size, that's also when we saw the most increase in our retail, you know, from Walmart to, to shopping, other shopping centers, canyon corners and so forth. Yeah. So, you know, the economics 101 is add people and then create retail opportunities. And as far as the wine industry and all that, I think we may have to be a little bit, you know, clever in how we do some of these developments that sometimes their point of sale is an option. To a business person, it doesn't, you know, they got to pay their sales tax no matter what, so it makes no difference to them what, you know, location it is, but sometimes for our purposes, it might be worth it to offer some incentives in exchange for saying you will designate American Canyon as the point of sale for your billions of gallons of wine. So I do think there are good strategies that we need to look at in terms of economic development beyond just a philosophy that says developers know what they're doing and we should just, you know, kind of go along for the ride. I think we can have more say in, in how our community develops than that. So, the question I have though, as far as the budget going forward, is we've talked about deferred maintenance. We've talked about capital set asides. So my question is, what's the dollar amount in the, in the recommend, or the, the budget for next year? How much are we setting aside for the ongoing need to replace our parks and redo our streets? Have we identified what that annual dollar amount should be and are we putting any money aside for that?
I know that for this year, the, the primary push was to determine and settle on the ARPA funding and we have looked at our needs overall and what it would take to get there. Since that was just put together about one to two months ago, we have not actually determined an actual annual set aside at this point. But we're, as I've said numerous times, we're also looking at ways to fund that that might be a little bit outside of the box where, one, going after grant opportunities that might help us to fund those things. Two, taking like a, a long-term liability for a long-term asset where we get some sort of funding that we pay back a set amount each year for X number of years to achieve a greater progress on that in the short term. And then you're looking at the, the debt service, which the city's debt service footprint is low, being able to help fund some of those improvements. But as far as pay as you go, we have not jumped into that as a, a set aside.
And I agree. I think debt service makes a lot of sense. We're relatively low and it makes sense to borrow money for a 20-year asset versus saving it up. My concern is that we have a lot of existing infrastructure and it, you know, over time it gets old. And it seems like we should have a better handle on what that annual cost is, considering the councils asked for that for a number of years, well before you got here.
I, I can inform you that Director Hernandez is moving forward with a new program, solution that contains all the maintenance schedules for all of the assets you put in useful life periods and it helps project those needs on an ongoing basis. So if that is something that we can get up and running in this coming fiscal year, hopefully it would bring us a long way closer to having that answer in a more concrete term in the next budget process.
Perfect. Like I said, I, I've always assumed that the dollar amount would be more than we have to work with, but if we don't know we need, say, $2 million a year, we're never going to, to begin working for it. And, and the problem is when we don't have these numbers year in and year out, that other costs start to creep in. So we start adding staff back that we cut. But the question for me is, is that more important than setting that money aside to address the, the infrastructure, the capital infrastructure we've already invested in? And I don't think we can make those decisions effectively if we basically say, I have no clue what that annual dollar amount is, but hey, we need a couple hundred grand here and a couple hundred grand there. And once you commit to salaries, those are an annual thing. And so two years from now, if you say, well, we need a million bucks, but there's just nothing available because we've already used it all up, you know, basically you're putting us in a corner where we don't have the solutions we need to address the long-term capital needs and that's frustrating to me. So I'm hoping that staff can come up with those numbers. I think plugging in the assets and, and basically calculating your annual depreciation would have been a very quick and easy rough number to start with, but I hope we will see it sooner or later.
Yeah, the, the annual depreciation I can pull easily from our financial statements.
It, it just seemed like it was a much easier task to me than it has turned out to be. And that is just one of the sources of frustration that I have because I, I'm concerned that we don't have the capacity, we're not building the capacity to replace the roads we need to replace them, renovate the parks we need to renovate them. And that, you know, that's just a problem with our quality of life. At some point that will suffer. You know, 20 years ago, we had the best roads in the county and now we have one of the worst. And the reason they were so great 20 years ago is because they were brand new and we haven't invested in that asset. And it's coming home to roost. So I appreciate where you're coming from and what you're up to. I'm just frustrated that it's taking so long to get an answer.
Right. I, I, I would also just mention that in our previous meeting with the funding gap analysis, we did talk about if we put this many million per year towards the solution, it would take this long. If we did this many million, it would take this long to close those funding gaps. I do agree if, if the idea to take, say, the depreciation and put it into like the building maintenance internal service fund, you are able to grow fund balance in an internal service fund as long as you have a plan for the use of those funds. And so as those maintenance come due, it doesn't become a large hit to the organization as you're funding it each year during that process.
Yes. And, and, you know, of course, the idea of borrowing, the, the strategies that you've talked about are great, but it seems to me we got to start off with what's the number we're trying to achieve, you know, and that's the missing ingredient for me. Thank you.
Thank you. On the note of growing a sales tax base, you know, a lot of that says to me, well, it's retail. What do people buy that they want, you know, they will get, they will benefit from the tax on? We've got incredible opportunity in this city on a number of fronts. We have the space to build retail. We've got the land. We certainly got the traffic. See, it's not just the people of American Canyon who shop here. It's people in neighbor communities as well, you know? As I've often said, the Vallejo shops are Safeway and our Walmart, we shop their Costco. I mean, you know, economies don't know these artificial barriers. They know where products our people want. That being said, says to me, how do we market American Canyon out there? Who would be interested in coming to town? You know, who wants to, we've got this huge vacant parcel over here practically, except on Christmas and Halloween. Certainly, you know, somebody there might be interested in partnering with some sort of a developer to bring in more retail. So I didn't really look to that as being one of the solutions. Tell the story, you know, there's an opportunity here. Redwood Credit Union is moving corporate office to the airport. They have one in Santa Rosa. They will have about 500 employees, right? And coming onboard is Watson Ranch with all the housing. So what's your commute time to your job? Somebody who works over that area says it's about eight minutes from American Canyon, right? What's people's normal commute time in the Bay Area? Hour, hour and a half each direction? Yeah, it's going to draw a lot of people. I think that's going to draw a lot of interest in having my store here where I can sell stuff, whatever that might be. So I think there's a marketing aspect to that for American Canyon as well. We need to, well, kind of look at what do we have now? How can, can we expand on that? Tell the story. This is a great place. Thanks for the report. This is a receive?
It is.
Okay. Any motion needed toward that?
No, Mayor. Thank you for the, oh, that's a good point. We should probably have some public comment. Thank you. Councilmember Joseph, merit. Might be appropriate to have public comment.
All right, sure. Public comment on the matter.
I have, sorry, in person first?
Sorry, I just, I know the city owns quite a bit of property, Lilyville for one, the property over here. Is there any reason why we're just holding on to all this and not selling off our property?
Or developing it?
Low income, maybe affordable housing instead of Melvin Road?
Or both.
Yes, thank you for your comment. Anybody on, in the queue?
I have no other hands ready. Actually, there are no, no, we only have panel left on our, on our Zoom.
Well, very good. Then we'll close public comment this time. And returning counsel, recognizing that this is simply information to be received.
Yes, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on now to staff, management staff oral reports.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'm actually looking at staff. I don't know if we have any updates. It seems like Parks and Parks Director has an update. Walking to the front. And I think maybe Teresa will share a little bit of an update about what she's doing the rest of the week.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I am here for my bi-weekly community updates. So tomorrow we have our joint PCS and OSAC meeting at 5:30 PM. It will be held via Zoom. You can get that Zoom link on our website as well as the agenda. On April 8th, North Bay Watershed will be holding a virtual conference on climate change and weather, weathering extremes together. On April 8th as well, there will be a Zoom-based stories for our ancestors. On April 9th, we have Donuts in the Park with your CRO at Via Bellagio Park. On April 10th, we have Napa County will be holding a public health fair. On April 13th, there is a general plan housing element workshop at 6:00 PM. The agenda and the Zoom link is on our website as well. And then on April 16th, the American Canyon Community Spring Event will be held at Shenandoah Park from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. A lot of things to do in American Canyon.
Teresa.
Yeah, I actually do. So leaving this evening, immediately after our council meeting, Cherry Walton and I, the deputy city clerk, will be driving to Burlingame and attending our, California City Clerks Association has their annual conference until Friday, so we'll be there for a few days. I'm really excited that a heavy focus of this event is going to be records management, which is something that we're going to be heavy focused on as well in our office and records retention, that type of thing. And there also are some sessions regarding hybrid meetings. So I'm excited to have a cup, at least this under our belt and, and be able to hear if other people have some things that might work well for them that we could incorporate here, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all we had, Mayor. Thank you.
Move on to Mayor Council comments, committee reports and take up after that, future agenda items. Let's see, who would like to start here? Oh, go to your top. Councilmember Washington, anything to add to your report?
Nothing to add. I got it in on time.
Looks like we all did. Hang on a second here. Next listed is, Councilmember Joseph, anything to add to yours?
I don't think so. I got mine in on time, so.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Oral.
Nothing to add on mine. I do have some comments though. I think tonight went pretty smoothly. I think, yeah, I think it looked pretty good on the other end too, is what I kind of heard from folks. It's so great to see so many other. Listen, you're talking to, the guy speaking in front of you right now is the guy who's worked from home for the last 19 years. Me leaving the house is, I don't look forward to it honestly because I work from home all the time. But tonight was actually, I was like, you know what? This is a good thing. It's good to see people again. It's good to do this in person. It's much better than it is Zoom. The fact, it's not as convenient as it is doing Zoom, but it's really good to be here amongst my council members. I'm hoping that we can continue this and hopefully, you know, this pandemic doesn't come roaring back in any way and hopefully we can continue doing this. So good job to the team. Couple of recommendations, get us longer microphones because I feel myself leaning into this too.
They're already on order.
Yeah.
They are.
Get the ones, get the ones with the mute button too.
We're shopping on Amazon during meeting.
So anyways, that's that. Thanks.
Thank you. I'd like to add a couple of things here too. We had the, oh, let's see, where was it? Oh, it was the community, that's where it was. CBNL, Center for Volunteer and Nonparticul Leadership, had their seventh annual Hearts of Napa Awards. Powell as the volunteer of the year, but he was one of three recipients from American Canyon. Youth volunteer of the award, two of them. Emily Long, nominated by American Canyon Community and Parks Foundation. And she's volunteers with that organization a lot. You see her out there with that park and play, helping set up, working with the, all the events that ACCPF does. Cassan Shapi, another youth in American Canyon, volunteer at Mentis. Mentis is a mental health service organization.
You saying Hassan? Oh, that's my neighbor. Okay.
Right, yes. So it's just great to see, this comes around every year for America, for Napa Valley. And it's just great to see that the efforts in American Canyon are recognized. So I appreciate that. I'd like to point out something here that was from the ABAG, Association of Bay Area Governments. There's something there that, you know, we all have this issue with traffic and people speeding. An Assembly member, Friedman, has a bill 2336 in development and it's for speed cameras. Yeah, you put those up and it records somebody speeding. More to be seen in that, but it sounds like something I know that we would be interested in as a city. I hear a lot about that traffic issues and people driving too fast. The board voted unanimously to support it and its development. We'll see what comes out on the other end. It's more of a trial phase type of thing. Everybody's saying, I want one. But it's the details will be coming forth on that. So I thought to talk with Chief Greenberg about it, Mr. Hawley. So something we may want to look into for American Canyon. Those were probably the big highlights of the last two years with it. Yes. Well, compliments for this evening. I think it ran fairly well. You know, hiccups are expected when you've got new technology. We're trying to work out all the kinks in it. But I do appreciate everybody's patience and engagement in it. And my God, isn't it great to be back with people again? Human beings are people animals. We like to have other people around us. And this is feeling better all the time, so. With that being said, I really appreciate your effort this evening. Anything for future agenda items?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I've been bringing this up for a couple of years and it's, I don't know if it's an agenda item or not, but I've been hounding Jason about it and I've been suggesting it all to you. But since we've improved the technology in the council chambers, I would love for us to maybe get an emblem of the City of American Canyon behind you so that when we're on film, it actually looks like the City of American Canyon. So I'm holding it up, the City of American Canyon official coaster. But maybe something snazzy here would be cool in that way, there you go, just enlarge that thing somehow. In that way, when we're on broadcast, since we're going to be Zoom more often, and particularly when other meetings are here, that people know that, what city that they're looking at.
Good suggestion. I like the idea. Thank you.
You want to vote on that?
No, I think.
You got the direction?
No, it's something we have. We found it the other day when Congressman Thompson was here presenting the actual Congressional Record Statement to, to the mayor. You know, we wanted to take a picture and a backdrop and we actually had to move the flags over to the, to the nicest piece of art that we have in this room, which is over there. And to your point, had we had something that looked, you know, told where you were in the, in the world, some sort of mural or emblem, we probably would, just would have taken the photo up right there, so.
Well, that's the common thing with whether you're doing pictures or selfie at an event, you know, if there's a banner or something, it's, oh, this is where we were, you know? It, it labels it. Good point. Yeah, yeah.
So we'll start looking at some options.
Anything further on future agenda items? No? Well, thank you all. We've concluded our business for the evening. Appreciate everybody's input. We are adjourned. Good night, American Canyon.